Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via the CityLink and posted on www minnehaha county.gov site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission’s decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, March 3, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, March 18, 2025, at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda, is anyone here who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, consent agenda, we only have two items. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the January 27, 2025 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 25-13 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 4,400 square feet on the property legally described as the east, 715.7 feet, the north 572 feet. There is an exception of H-1 and of exception, north half, southeast quarter, and the south 142 feet, the east 637.93 feet, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section 15, Township 103 North, range 51 West, that is in Grand Meadow Township. The petitioner and the property owner are Jeremiah Christensen, located at 25257 464th Avenue.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the irregular agenda. Item number three, conditional use permit 25-11 to amend Cup 23-51 for a rubble dump, that’s tree grinding operation, on the property legally described as tract 1, Mueller Edition, north half, northwest quarter, Section 34, Township 101 North, range 51 West, that is in Wall Lake Township. Petitioners Mueller Palace LLC, property owner is Henry Mueller, located at 463 49 267th Street.
Good evening, Commissioners Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. So yes, this conditional use permit is to amend an existing conditional use permit for Mueller Palates at their tree grinding location. They are requesting to amend the materials that are allowed to be accepted at the site, and these materials would be considered blended wood waste, and this would be in addition to their already clean wood that is accepted at the site. The petitioner does already accept these materials at their existing indoor location at the T exit off of I-29, and they have an existing beneficial use letter from the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources for this existing location, and they would need to amend that beneficial use letter to include this site if this conditional use permit is approved. The blended wood waste that I mentioned would include materials such as cabinet offcuts, plywood, and other new construction wood. It wouldn’t include any nonwood materials, any heavily coated wood materials, any chemically treated wood materials, or any demolition wood debris. So the difference between the demolition wood would be wood that would come from old construction houses, houses built in any time prior than now, essentially. The new construction wood would be wood that’s being, from properties, that’s current houses and other structures that are being built right now, and the offcuts from that. It wouldn’t be from any demolition wood that could be from, that could have a mixture of any other materials in it, that wouldn’t be wood. The petitioner did state that this would add approximately eight truckloads of volume per week between this site and the existing T site, and that could expand into the future depending on the amount of volume they, depending on if the volume increases significantly or not. Currently, this blended wood waste end product is used for animal bedding and animal mortality composting, and Mueller Palates currently sends this to three different locations, and none of these locations are located in Minnehaha County. Additionally, that state DNR beneficial use letter that I mentioned does regulate what materials can be accepted at the site, where the end product can be shipped, how the end product is used, and any other requirements deemed necessary by the state. And staff was in contact with the state DNR’s office, and they conducted a site visit of this location on February 6, and planning staff did meet with the state DNR’s office that same day. Therefore, staff is recommending that a condition be placed on the permit that requires the petitioner to amend their existing beneficial use letter with the state DNR and obtain any other additional permits required by that office prior to accepting any of the blended wood waste at the site. Finally, the petitioner is not requesting any additional changes to the previously approved conditional use permit. However, they will be required to obtain a new solid waste permit in accordance with the county’s solid waste ordinance prior to accepting any of the blended wood waste at the site, and this has been added as a condition of approval. And staff did perform a site visit of the property on February 11, and at that site, during the site visit, staff noticed that from the previous permit to now, all of the old buildings on the site have been removed, so the previous farmstead, I might pull the picture up here so we can look at that. The previous farmstead and other buildings that are, can kind of see them in the trees here in this imagery from 2023 have all been removed. The petitioner has constructed a berm on the north property line here, and these shelter belt trees on the west property line have stayed on the property, but most of these trees down in this grove have been removed, and I’ll show pictures of that later. Additionally, the petitioner has completed the required paving of the first 150 feet of driveway into the site, and the remaining drive, part of the driveway is gravel with a turnaround at the end. The nearest non-residential use is an electrical substation just a quarter mile to the northwest, and then the nearest residential uses are a half mile to the southwest and a half mile to the northwest. And the prevailing wind direction in Minnehaha County in the winter would be from the northwest and from the southeast in the summer, and so the majority of the prevailing winds and any material that could be blown off the site would be the trees, and the berm would act as windbreaks and also prevent materials from being blown to the northwest. And then additionally, the property to the southeast is the landfill, so it’s an uninhabited land use. So then, for every conditional use permit, we look at six criteria, so I’ll go over those briefly. So criteria number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon the property values in the area. The majority of the property in the immediate area is agricultural with that one electrical substation just to the northwest, and then the city landfill. And the shelter belts of trees and the berm will help to screen the property from any surrounding neighbors. The site is also located, as I mentioned, in close proximity to the intersection of two county highways and the city landfill, and so any additional traffic to the area will be minimal compared to the existing traffic conditions. Criteria number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for use is predominant in the area. Again, the property is located in the agricultural production area of the county where the main land use is agriculture, and any development on the vacant land in the area would be limited by the availability of building eligibilities. The continued use of this property as, that used to be an old farmstead and as the rubble dump will not affect the agricultural production of the county. And again, the additional traffic to the site should be minimal compared to the existing traffic. That access, number three is that utilities, access road, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. So as mentioned, the access into the site has been paved for the first 150 feet, and the petitioner did apply for and was approved for an access permit last year, and yeah, last year for that access by the county highway department. They have also included in the site plan that there will be all the other necessary facilities, including the guard shack which is already on the site, the sign which is already on the site, and the outdoor restroom in this northeast corner here. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Most of the traffic to this site is for deliveries and pickups, and the applicant has provided, as I said, that truck turnaround point here at the end of the driveway. And employee parking is provided to the south side of the guard shack at the entrance to the site. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The process of grinding wood could have the potential to create noise and dust that could disturb nearby residential land uses. However, the nearest residential land use, as mentioned, is a half mile both to the northwest and southwest, so there is considerable distance between where the grinding will take place and the nearest residential uses. Additionally, limiting the hours of operation and number of days where grinding can take place will help limit those as well, as well as the shelter belt and berm on the site. Number six, that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The blended wood waste that will be accepted, as mentioned before, will only include materials such as cabinets, plywood, and other new construction wood, and not, would not include any of the heavy, heavily coated wood, chemically treated wood, like railroad ties or light poles or things like that. And additionally, the state beneficial use letter will explicitly outline what is allowed to be accepted at the site, and the petitioner will have to follow whatever is outlined in that state beneficial use letter. Therefore, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public should not be overly impacted by the proposed amendments to the existing operation. And additionally, the property is located in the agricultural production area, and the continued use of the property as the tree grinding operation will not affect that, and therefore, the request does comply with the goals and policies of the 2035 comprehensive plan. So with that, staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 2511 with 12 conditions. And I’ll just go through some of the site photos here. So this is the site plan. As you can see up here, you have the berm with the trees that were left on the site, and then the guard shack, and the employee parking with the winter parking. Currently, they have the tree pile here, and they would have overflow tree storage here, and this would allow them to have that blended wood waste in between the overflow tree storage and the tree piles where the grinding takes place. For the most part, I can show a picture of that in a second. So this is the, this is looking at the electrical substation to the northwest, so just off in the distance there would be the nearest residential house to the northwest across the highway, south of Wall Lake over there. And then this is looking from the electrical substation back towards the rubble site, so you can see the shelter belt along the west side there. And then this is looking directly south from the electrical substation, and you can see those trees down in the distance are that nearest residence to the southwest. So then this is looking back towards the electrical substation from Mueller Palates’ actual access, and then this is looking, you can kind of see I’m back, you can see the asphalt here, I’m back a little bit into the driveway at this point, but this would be looking back towards the landfill along the county road. And then you can see here the guard shack, and then they were grinding the day that I was there, so you can see the fresh piles that they had grinded, and then the piles in the back that had had the snow over top of them from, so they had been grinded a previous day, but you can see not much dust is coming off at that point when I was there. And so, yeah, I guess with that, I can read the 12 conditions if you would like me to, otherwise I’m available for any questions from you guys.
Any questions for him? Joe?
Madam Chair, just a question on the 12 conditions, what are the, which ones are the new ones?
Sure. So condition number three, isn’t a new condition, but the wording is different, because before the condition number three said that only clean, untreated, unpainted, unstained wood can be accepted, no other materials can be accepted. So number three now says the petitioner shall obtain a beneficial use letter and any other required permits from the State Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources for the site prior to the acceptance of any blended wood waste, all blended wood waste accepted at the site shall meet all of the regulations and requirements of the state DNR. This shall be in addition to the already approved clean wood waste accepted at the site. So that is the main one that changed. The other one that changed was number 12, the wording changed a little bit to say that the petitioner shall require, shall be required to obtain a new solid waste permit in accordance with the Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance prior to accepting any blended wood waste at the site. So they have an existing solid waste ordinance that allows them to accept clean wood, and that would be the case up until they get that new solid waste permit. So if, for some reason, they don’t obtain a new solid waste permit, they can still accept the clean wood just until they get the new one, they can’t accept the blended wood waste.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Petitioner here? Please state your name and address.
Paul Chutter at the Boyce Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, and I don’t want to belabor any of the points here. I spent a lot of time before you, last calendar year, talking about this site and my client’s business operation, but one item I do want to just address is a little bit of the misnomer of clean wood versus blended wood. The blended wood is not contaminated, it’s not an environmental hazard, it’s going to have some staining of stain on the wood, or is permitted to have some stain. It falls under the guidelines of the South Dakota DNR’s regulations, or some spray paint, but it’s accepting construction scrap wood. So a contractor who’s building a new home or building a commercial building may have a dumpster where they’re throwing odds and ends, leftover plywood, and unless there are sites such as this in the metro area, all of that wood goes in the landfill. And presently, when there are contractors that have that wood that are told, hey, here’s where you can take it, if they get to the applicant’s site, the applicant has to say right now, we can’t take that, and then they have to go to the landfill, and then pay the landfill to get that dropped off. So what’s happening is people are just not recycling that wood at all, and it’s filling up our landfill. There are others in the industry, in the metro, who are accepting that wood without the requisite permits by the county and the state, but as we spoke to last year, this applicant wants to do things the right way and wants to be a good neighbor, and it now has a year under its belt of demonstrating to all of you and county planning staff and its neighbors out there that it’s lived up to its promises of being a good neighbor. So I’ll step aside and answer other questions that you might have, but this is a extension of the service and the business that this is operating at this site to the benefit of the community.
Any questions for him? Guess not, thanks Paul. Anyone from the audience care to address this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. At face value, this does seem like a pretty easy request in my mind, I mean, knowing that we’re not accepting demolition debris, is this kind of an extension of what’s already somewhat considered clean wood? I think it’s a reasonable request, so I’m not seeing any neighbor opposition either. I guess with that said, I’d make a motion to approve.
I’ll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 25-11. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item number four, conditional use permit 25-12 to amend Cup 19-37 to expand the sand and gravel extraction operation located in Sections 23 and 24, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, Brandon Township. To include the property legally described as the southwest quarter, there is an exception Ry and lots H-1, 2, 3, and 4, and Part W of Ry and except tract 1 of Johnson’s Edition and of exception, Section 23, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, that is in Brandon Township.
Good evening, Commissioners Mason from the County Planning Office again. So yes, the petitioner is requesting conditional use permit approval to amend their existing conditional use permit 1937 in order to include the subject property within the operational limits of the sand and gravel mine. So currently, this property is used for farm ground, I’ll probably pull up the map here so we can see it. So you can see, everything highlighted in red would be what would be included in the operational limits of the mine if this conditional use permit is approved. The expansion site would be this down here in the southwest corner. The petitioner is only requesting to utilize the portion east of the creek, but they were not able to split that off before they submitted this request, so they were required to notify off of that entire property there. So the use of this subject property will be for a new rail spur and access road to this existing site within the operation. So this existing site will be the site of the new material separation plant within the mine, and so the new rail spur off of the railroad over here will go through this corner of the property down to the new site for rail access and for truck access through the access road. And the new rail spur will be, I guess the new separation plant will be located, one material plant will be located with, just within 1,000 feet of this structure, or this house here, but in 2007, when this area was proposed to be extraction area, there was going to be extraction within 500 feet of this property, and that petitioner, or that property owner did sign a waiver at that time. So staff did perform a site visit of the quarry, or the sand mine on February 11. Most of the land in the area is farmland and is, but is surrounded by some residential acreages, as these two here, and then there’s farmstead here, and then you have the town of Corson down here, which has a cluster of, cluster of homes, but then also Midwest Railcar and other industrial development here. So it is kind of a mix of uses, but for the most part, it is ag, as you can see, just with a few residential acreages surrounding the property. And then the petitioner did propose a new, in the submitted site plan, the petitioner did propose a new haul road on, basically down here onto 260th Street. Staff did put in the conditions of approval to not recommend approval of that new haul road, and therefore, the petitioner will have to reroute the existing haul road within the site. Staff found, we did get some, also, staff in writing, the staff report found that that would cause a great impact to the township road and to this nearest property owner, and staff did receive some comments today, both from Brandon Township and from that nearest property owner to that haul road, that they, Brandon Township is not necessarily opposed to it, I believe one of their members might be here tonight, but they haven’t had a chance to discuss it with the petitioner at all. They’re potentially going to talk about it at tomorrow’s meeting, tomorrow’s township meeting, and so they wanted, they would prefer option one in the site plan and narrative, which would be not to use 260th Street, and that was the staff recommendation anyway, so I can kind of go through that over the site plan here in a second, but I will go over the six criteria again for every conditional use permit. So the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the use is already permitted. As stated, there is one residence within the 1,000 feet of, this residence here is just within 1,000 feet of one of the, one of the material piles from the plant, but that property owner did sign a waiver, and the proposed rail spur and access road will be, including those in the operational limit, shouldn’t overly impact the neighboring properties, and allowing rail access into the site will help reduce truck traffic in the area. The hours of operation will also stay the same as they have been since the property was originally approved, and any maintenance operations that do not create off-site noise will still be allowed to occur outside of those designated hours of operation. Number two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant land for the use is predominant in the area. The submitted reclamation plan that was submitted at, during previous conditional use permits and would still govern the reclamation of the site, stated that the mining area will be reclaimed to a maximum slope of three to one and is anticipated to be returned to agricultural land. And as I stated before, the primary use of the area currently is agricultural land, and any development will be limited by any available building eligibilities and any potential annexation by the city of Brandon if they were to annex Corson or anything else in the area. Number three, that utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. So the petitioner has explained in the narrative that the existing mining operation has reduced the drainage basins in the area in order to limit sediment and erosion, and that the reclamation plan will reestablish surface flow that will limit the harm to downstream neighbors. They also stated that they have existing permits with the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources for stormwater discharge. And then again, as mentioned, the site already has existing haul roads off of Highway, SD Highway 11, and there was the potential for adding a new haul road on 260th Street, but staff is recommending to not, to not allow that haul, that new haul road, and we have been in contact with Knife River, and Knife River does accept that condition as of this afternoon, I was contacting the petitioner. And then number four is that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. So the off-street parking and loading requirements will not increase based on the truck access road and rail spur on, through, through the expansion site, and the petitioner should continue to provide one off-street parking space per employee, for every, one off-street parking space per employee and two off-street parking spaces for customers. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The applicant will continue to include buffer zones and around the mining area, which is currently done in other locations around the mine. This will not, this request is not expanding the mining area. Again, the site here will be a new separation plant, and then the rail spur and access road will be through the expansion site, and the use of rail transportation will limit the amount of truck traffic to and from the material plant, and the not allowing or recommending the condition of not using 260th Street as a haul road will also limit the concerns to neighboring property owners and other nuisances. Number six, that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan, there should be no significant harm to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public by allowing the petitioner to use the subject property for a truck access road and railroad spur. Goal five, additionally, goal five of the Environmental Stewardship Chapter of the comprehensive plan does state that the county should recognize that sand and gravel deposits within the county are a non-renewable natural resource and are beneficial to the economy of the county and the welfare of its people. Therefore, allowing the petitioner to better utilize an existing mining location is consistent with the goals and policies of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. So I’ll just go over some, I took quite a few pictures on, at my site visit on the 11th, but I’ll kind of go through them quickly, but I’ll show this site plan first so you can see, this would be that property, this would be the nearest residential house to the separation plant, and so the separation plant would be moving from the site here down to this location here, and then this would be the expansion site with the rail spur and the access road down here. So this little box in the yellow here, you can see was, would be that potential haul road that staff is recommending not to be allowed, where it would connect down through the site to 260th Street, about a third mile, third of a mile east of Highway 11, directly in close proximity to this additional house here. And then the trucks would go, if this were, if this was to be allowed, the trucks would go west to Highway 11. And then I’ll just show the setback map here so you can see, this south pile here is the closest point to all the residences to the south, and this house here, as I said, is just within that 1,000 feet. So then, yeah, I’ll just take a, so this is looking at that nearest residence, the residence is actually a little bit farther to the east, but this is kind of looking to the north from the road on 260th Street, and it shows the shelter belts on the north side of that property, so the mine would be on the other side of those trees. And then this is looking directly east on 260th Street, so this would be where that nearest residence would be. And then this is looking to the west, so the, that potential haul road would come out about right here and then go west that way, and you can see the bridge over Split Rock Creek there. And then this is kind of looking on the very south end of that property to the north, you can see the concrete plant there at the You can see the uh, the concrete plant there at the actual Knife River location farther up to the north, and I'll show pictures of that in a second. Um, so then this is actually up on Highway 11. You can see the shelter belt of trees that they have planted along the highway there. Um, and then this is looking across the street. So you can see there is additional and du- industrial development across the street with the Midwest rail car. And then this is looking a little bit further south towards Corson. So at the intersection of 260th and uh Highway 11 there, there'd be that apartment building on one side, and then on the other side would be, uh, I think it's called the lunchbox. It's a um, a restaurant, and then uh just a couple of commercial warehouse buildings. Uh, and then this would be uh looking at, to the southwest again from their actual access on SD Highway 11. And then this is looking to the north, and then this is looking into the site. So this is their existing buildings here, and then looking straight uh to the east towards their existing plant location, and then looking a little bit farther to the southeast towards where those houses are. So with that, um, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit 2512 to expand the sand and gravel mining operation with uh 25 conditions. Um, and I, again, am available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Go.
Um, so is this am- amending an existing permit or is this a new permit? Just to clarify again our conditions and what we're building upon.
Yep. So the conditional use permit from 2019 would govern the entire area, and they're amending that to include this area. So now this conditional use permit will govern everything, the expansion area plus the existing mine.
So these 25 conditions apply to the, the whole?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, maybe a point of clarity, um, and I think I know the answer, but just so everyone's aware.
Sure.
You know, we, we talked about condition 25 is option one. You know, and I, as I look at this box up here, I see the, the big red boxes all the way to southwest, you know, and a lot closer to Corson, some of those residences. Well, if we do approve this tonight, we're not saying that they could mine all in that southwest corner. It really has to apply to the site map they laid out in option one, correct?
Correct. So the option one is specifically for the haul road, just so we're clear on that too. So the option road is for the haul road. So option one of the site plan would be to use this existing haul road within the site and reroute it to, within the site. Option two would be to have the haul road down here onto 260th Street um and use 260th Street. So it might be easier for me to show it on here.
No, I, I think that's fine. Again, just want to be, as option one's really only letting us do the rails for now, and do the rail spur, and um, it does not allow that access road to the south.
Correct. It does not allow that access road to the south. And yeah, like I said, uh, just as another point of clarification, they're applying on this entire property here, but they're actually only gonna be utilizing the portion east of the river or of the creek. So uh, they had to notify off the entire property, as I said, because they, that is why the property owner is listed as Knife River and Sandra Johnson, because um Sandra Johnson currently owns this entire thing, and they're in the process of buying the part east of the river from her. So she was required to sign the application, but it is the intent of Knife River to buy, purchase the, separate the part east of the river, and that would be the part.
That's fair enough. I just want to make sure, you hate to say this, that there's not a bait and switch. I mean, that this is truly what we're, what we're proving, and it can't be a something later, so.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? Thank you. He's the petitioner here. Please state your name and address.
Evening Commissioners, Colin Chatterton, Knife River, uh 1500 North Sweetman Place here in Sioux Falls. Um, so yeah, I just want to build off of what Mason said tonight. Uh, a big, since it's fresh in my mind, and I wrote it down just to remember too, uh, that is a major point of clarity uh for the group tonight. We did have to include that entire parcel, um, just as a formality for the process, but the intent is to only alter about, if you look at the site plan, approximately 15 to 20 acres is all, east of the river or east of Split Rock Creek there. Um, and the CUP, when approved, um, is pretty standard in many Haha County and most counties to hold the petitioner to the site plan that is shared during the meeting. So if we were to develop outside of that site plan, we would uh be in violation of the conditional use that you approved tonight. So that is a good point of clarity. Uh, otherwise, uh, a big reason why we are here tonight is actually because we realized, after we requested concurrence with the zoning staff uh to my left here, uh, we did receive a letter of concurrence that if we were to cite this new proposed development all within the bounds of our currently owned property, we would have been able to avoid amending and uh continue under the 19-37, I believe, um, without having to go through this process. But we noticed that we would be impacting Sandra Johnson's land, and so we wanted to make sure that we went through the proper processes. And that's why we are standing before you tonight and also working on the deal with Sandra as well. Um, point, another point to make sure that everyone is aware of is yes, there are all existing permits currently that need to be in place as far as the state of South Dakota goes. Um, we have the CUP already, as stated previously, but we do have active stormwater permits in the area um that cover our activities at both the ready-mix and the sand and gravel and the quarry operation there. Uh, so we do have all of our current permits with the state of South Dakota. Um, there does happen to be a federal nexus with this project uh during review of all of the water resources that we could potentially be impacting south of our existing wash plant. Uh, it was made aware that the uh US Army Corps of Engineers had jurisdiction over a few of those water bodies. So we are currently going through a section 404 process, uh, which means that we have subjected ourselves to review by every federal agency that you can think of, um, that has to do with land use. So the EPA has been involved, the US Fish and Wildlife Service has been involved, uh, state historical uh survey has been involved. Uh, the US Army Corps has their own historical review team that we are working with as well. So every single aspect of the development is under heavy scrutiny because of the federal nexus that is involved in this. So uh, we are here before you to get the CUP in place, but we cannot alter the site and the, and the water resources on site until we finish that 404 process. Uh, so that is still in the works. Um, otherwise, um, there, we really don't anticipate any significant changes to offsite impacts uh due to this change. We're basically one for one. We're eventually going to be decommissioning the existing plant, and you will only see the use of the one plant that we are proposing tonight. Um, so eventually, overall, and even during the transition period, we do not anticipate any offsite impacts as we are planning the development as one should to make sure we are minimizing any kind of uh flows offsite during construction and post-construction and any air quality issues and the like. Um, and the only other thing that we would like to add is that there's a lot of discussion about option one, option two, and the haul route. And uh, as Mason stated, we did discuss that today with him and the zoning staff, and we do not have any issues with the conditions as proposed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to address this item? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Beth Warden. I live at 26003 482nd Avenue. That's right on Highway 11, and I'm basically kitty-corner from the uh intersection of 260th where they will be um purchasing the land. First of all, I want to say that the Johnsons are friends of ours for several generations. I wish them the best in their new chapter in life. I do have concerns of Knife River and what could come. My neighbors and I received a letter signed by Andy Haas to call with any questions. I did call and leave a message. Clark Meyer returned the call, identified himself as the president of the Sioux Falls Division of Knife River. He said, "We're neighbors now." He described purchasing the land we're talking about tonight, and he also included the fact that they're purchasing the farm right across the street from me, including the buildings and the homes there too. I am frustrated with the fact that the sale is actually pending, and yet he told me, "We are neighbors now," and he has purchased the land across the street from my house and to the north. I asked about 260th Street if it was going to be used by any of their trucks, and he told me, "No." Then I looked at the agenda and the attachment and saw that it was listed as option two. I'm grateful that that will not happen. However, I am concerned about what is told to me on the phone versus what is put in writing. So at this point, I am requesting Knife River only contact me in writing as to the fact that the phone conversations are often different than what is given in writing. I would like to show you a view of 260th Street from my front porch, and this is also a view that my neighbors share as well. Uh, I went for a drive just over the weekend, and I took pictures of some of the uh former homes and acreages that Knife River has purchased in the past. And I want to show you what they do to the land after they take possession of it, and it is vacated, and this greatly concerns me. Are you able to rotate it, or you want me to rotate it?
That's fine. I'll just.
Okay, so this is the view from my porch. Oh, sorry. Um, and I'll put my finger here too if I can. So this uh, this large tree here and uh to the left, that's all of uh 260th Street, the gravel road, and the land that is being purchased by Knife River. Here's another view, and you can see that this greatly affects uh the view that I will be having. Now we're going to 259th. This is land that has been purchased by Knife River, former acreages and homes and that kind of thing. You'll see dilapidated buildings there that are not being taken care of, cement berms that are located there at a former residence. Here's a garage that is falling apart. And I'd also like to show to you, also from 259th, there is uh just chunks of metal at one of the former sites. This is not something that we need close to Corson. They need to take better care of the former acreages and farms and homes that they've already purchased to do their work. Here's another picture of 259th. When they first started doing work for the quarry, which they also own north of Corson, they put up a stop sign without, my understanding was, without permission on 259th. Jeff Barth was a member of the commission at that time. I called him, he got it fixed. There is no longer a stop sign, and now Knife River, and their trucks are the ones that need to make that stop. So I don't want Corson to look like these pictures I'm showing you here. And without your help, this is what we could be facing when we are looking out of our homes. Now, we understand that there is growth in Corson. I, Marmin's been great, rail car repair has been great. We're just asking for Knife River to do the same and make the land that they own look good for their neighbors and those that go for a drive in the country. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Kayla Dover, uh, 48197 Corson Street. And uh, I am curious as to when these um processes are being done, the 404 process, the federal nexus, uh, if we move forward. I, I'm all about growth, I'm happy with that. So be it. I'm more concerned about getting those environmental impact things before we move forward on this, mainly because of, well, when Knife River started um the quarry, from what I understand, after that, Corson's well dried up. Uh, aqua forests, obviously mining and aqua forests, it's a thing, and sinkholes have it. We're right there on Highway 11 with runs down to the river, there's a big grade down there. I'm really concerned about what that's gonna mean for, I mean, there's big cracks starting in people's yards, and actually on Corson Street now. And I'm not sure if that has anything to do with the water table from the operations that are already there, or what the deal is. But it's not just my yard, it's Corson Street is beginning to crack across the road, and a couple of my neighbors also have them, and we're not talking small cracks in the ground. Um, I've actually got a picture of one of the ones in my, my yard, which is, I mean, it's not something that just happens. And you can see, I put my foot in the picture for reference to size. And it's not, like I said, it's not just my, my yard. Um, and it's across the gravel road, the Corson Street. And it's uh, for a, a street that's driven on quite a bit. I'm not sure why there's cracking, and that's why I'm saying. My main concern is the fact that, like I said, I, I'd like to see what's going on environmentally speaking, 'cause that's concerning.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Dialin Cruz. I live at 48, 244, 260th Street. That little acreage right there that they wanted to run that haul road by. The only thing I want to say is I've been dealing with that gravel pit for the, what, 35 years now? And for the most part, they've been a pretty good neighbor. When this all started back in, I think it was 91, there was a rather large discussion about 260th Street as a haul road. There was a large di- con- discussion about quarrying up there. And so they want to put in a new plant. What are they gonna do with that plant? They got a plant they've been sand for 35 years, and now they got a new quarry up there. That's a crushed plant. Nobody said a single word that that was a quar- that they're gonna quarry, crush quarry rock there. They're not gonna do sand. Now, the original conditional use permit did not allow them to do that, or, and it did not allow them to be on that haul of 260th Street. Because number one, the township, it's a township road, and the township couldn't deal with the bridge damage that would have occurred had all those trucks been going over that bridge. And I think at the time, the president of the township stated that unless Sweetman wanted to take over maintenance of that bridge, there was no way that the township could deal with that bridge. So that's, that's, and there's one other thing. They, in their permit application, they said that uh everybody had rural water. Nobody has rural water. I'm not on rural water. Justin's not on rural water. All those dilapidated buildings that are on the other side of the section are not rural water. I lived out there since I was seven years old. I'd know, I remember when they put the water lines in. So I don't know how you're gonna address the, the water issue, but, you know, that's a concern.
Hello, my name is Kelly Cruz, um, brother to the guy who's just standing here. I was very involved in the original permitting of this piece of ground. Dick Sweetman stood in front of us and said, "We will never, and we will never this, and we will never that, and I'm not interested in quarrying any rock there. I've got a huge rock quarry on the west side of Sioux Falls. Why would I want to come out here and quarry?" Dick Sweetman is the one that kept Burlington Northern from opening a quarry there. As the president of the South Dakota Board of Minerals and the Environment, that was the one permit that Burlington Northern couldn't get to dig quartzite out of the site that Knife River is currently digging. Okay? So they had no intention, Dick Sweetman had no intention. The original haul road that was specified in the conditional use permit went up 259th Street north to the Split Rock Lutheran Church. Then it went, um, is it 259th? 480, whatever, a mile, the gravel a mile east of the current sand pit. It went up to the Split Rock Lutheran. up to the Split Rock Lutheran Church, it came over to Highway 11, and then south through Corson. Okay? So they already amended the original conditional use permit so that they could haul directly on the Highway 11. And that doesn't bother me. But when they started talking about hauling past 260th Street, on 260th Street, they were going to go out the east side of the pit, come down to 260th Street to the south, and then east into Corson. And we got in front of the Brandon Township, talked to them, talked to Dick Sweetman, who said, "Yeah, we have no intention of hauling on that road." Well, Brandon Township stopped them. But there's been some adjustments to this conditional use permit already. And I'd hate to see a quartzite crushing plant 1,000 feet from my brother's property, and they aren't even talking about it. The, the president of Knife River was the only one that mentioned the word quarry. Notice that all of the pictures this guy took, you couldn't see any of the houses that are certain, that are sitting there. Okay? So they aren't being 100% on, on level with people here. Okay? They never were. Sweetman never was, right? I know he's out of it at this point. His brother's out of it, and Knife River owns it now. But at the same time, they shouldn't, you know, if they're going to crush quartzite on this new site, how come they aren't saying that? You know, that's got to be in their mind. We've heard that they're going to run a conveyor from the origin, from the quarry site down to this new crush plant. And the reason that Burlington Northern wants that rock is because it's the hardest quartzite found anywhere in the area. It will not fracture on cracks in the rock. Okay? Burlington Northern wanted it for rail ballast, and Dick Sweetman kept them from getting it. Okay? Because he owned the quartzite in Minnehaha County at that time. So he made it impossible for Burlington Northern to quarry there, but look who's quarrying there now. And they say it's going to be active for the next 100 years. Okay? So if they are going to crush quartzite 1,000 feet from my brother's property, it's going to affect his ability to sell in the future. It's going to affect his property values and, you know, if you're interested in permitting this, you have to find out exactly what they intend to do. And I think what they intend to do is crush quartzite on this property, because that's where they fill the trains.
Anyone else care to address this item? The petitioner, would you like to come forward and maybe answer some of these questions?
Yes, ma'am. Calling Chatterton again, Knife River. I'll try to, I dance around when I write down things to try to make sure I keep track of everything. Purchase clarification was a, one of the first things brought up earlier. Yeah, again, the way that this real estate transaction worked out, we really were only interested in that portion east of the creek. But there seemed to be some dealings with the Johnsons that they wanted everything to be involved with the real estate transaction. But we, this permit amendment is only concerning what that shared site plan is. Actually, could we go back to that site development plan, if possible? So as you can see there, the conveyor noted is on that site plan shared. The conveyor that was just noted is on that site plan that is shared. So just want to be totally transparent that this is exactly what the planned development is out on property. But we are working on the purchase agreement to, in order to utilize that sliver of land for that major blue line that you see there coming from the northwest, diving southeast. That's actually hopefully intended rail access. So that's what that part of that development is. So otherwise, that, the line just shifted a little bit over there to the west is what would be a planned conveyor system. Not much unlike what's already out there. If you drive there now, we can, you can run conveyors for miles and miles, and it's pretty minimally invasive, actually, for a lot of reasons. And it is not as noisy as one would think either. As far as Ms. Beth Warden, apologies for any treatment. Again, I'll have my card today. So if there are any interested persons, I am the environmental manager for this area for the company. So land use permitting, regulations, impacts, that's what I get paid to do 24/7. So I can assure you that if you would like to talk to anybody, you could probably talk to me. But if you would like to be contacted in writing, I can do so. As far as the property aesthetics concern, as timing would have it, we actually had been talking, discussing this internally for a few months now. And I was informed tonight that actually there is a contract that is about to be in place to demolish a lot of the buildings that are falling apart on some of these vacant lots. Because the intent is for it to match more of an agricultural use type of look. For any properties that we have bought, one goal of Knife River's when they bought out Sweetman Construction was to come in and clean up properties that Sweetman may have purchased in the past, but didn't really have a good plan as far as, are we going to clear this property, clean it up? Are we going to make it more concurrent, more congruent with the surrounding properties? So that is actually something that Big Brother Knife River has been pushing on us locally to make sure that we do a better job cleaning up these properties. So that's something that will be in the works and probably will kind of work in tandem or maybe even ahead of this project we are discussing tonight. As far as, there was a lot of water talk. I will take the loss on the application. I thought that all wells were logged at the state of South Dakota's database. Turns out some domestic uses do not have to report to the state that they were installed. So that's where that comment comes from. We were just looking at the most available, the best data we had available without having to call a bunch of people. And turns out that that data has some gaps. So apologies on that. Would like to highlight that domestic uses per state law have a number one priority over any existing water rights. So if it is found that there are damages to domestic uses in the area, and it can be traced back to something that we are up to at either our quarry or existing site, we would be legally liable to fix those damages as the, as the party that brought them on them. So that's a good thing to highlight here, as far as being a good neighbor is concerned, but also it is state law, codified state law. So with that statement, we do have many active water rights on this property. We have a water right for the quarry. We have, I think, three different old water rights that have been lumped together for the current site. And actually, the plan is to, as you can see, those ponds on the far west side, that's some fresh grading. That's for reuse and recirculation of wash, wash water on site. So this, this particular portion of what we are proposing and, and hoping that we can work with you to get the amendment for the CUP tonight would be all superficial work. No mining to speak of with this portion of any of this. And so we don't even anticipate any real impacts to any nearby water users with what you see before you with this development plan. Let me make sure I'm not missing anything here. Again, I know that there's, there's been mention of the environmental impact. Again, we're working through a very thorough process at the moment. That includes wildlife review, water resource review, all sorts of reviews that go into that. I know there's some talk of impacts that have happened to nearby utilities such as roads and whatnot. At this point in time, again, the water rights that were mentioned previously, in order to obtain a water right, you go through a very extensive review with the state water board and the state engineers at their water rights program, and they do a very thorough survey of the area. And they do not recommend a water use, water rights use, especially at a commercial or industrial level, be allowed unless they are confident that there will be no offsite impacts to other water users or resources. So that is a very key point to make there as far as our use, the existing use, and moving forward with the amendment. Any other reported offsite impacts, I would point towards more just the extremely dry conditions that we've been experiencing over the last year or two. As far as CUP allowances, I understand folks want some clarity there. As we understood it, you know, this is just replacing a plant site and trying to create the most efficient use with property that we already own without having to go and greenfield another site or maybe more heavily impact the city of Corson if we were to consider parcels, especially of the Johnsons or any other parcels nearby that might have the room for this particular project. So we saw this as the least impactful option ahead of us, in front of us. So that's why we're proposing to amend the current CUP that covers most of the area the sand mine is on. But I would like to clarify, we do have a separate CUP that was obtained in 2020 for the quarry. And if we were to make any changes to the quarry operation, we would have to amend that existing CUP before moving forward with that action. And another point of clarity for the group is that some sand operations, as allowed, do actually include crushing equipment. So I understand there can be some confusion there, but we do actually crush the nature of, depending on the nature of the material you're working with, sometimes you do have to include crushers. So whether the material being crushed might not matter. In this case, it's more just, crushers are typically a common component for any kind of plant that's harvesting earth minerals. So I believe I've covered as much of it as I can remember. If anyone else has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions for him? Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to address this item before I close the floor?
Am I allowed to speak again, or just one time?
Just one time. Anyone else? I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am chair, if I may.
Mike?
You know, understanding that the intent of, you know, a lot of the quarries is trying to keep them in, we're as close as we can to locations that they already exist, meaning, you know, if there's one to expand one, or if another one wanted to go up, it might be inappropriate to use to put it adjacent to an existing facility. And taking another step back to, you know, thinking about, this does exist here, and what we're really considering tonight is this expansion of the wash plan or pile storage kind of on that east side. You know, at face value, when we started looking at this initially, you know, I kind of too had red flags fly up, say, hey, if we're considering a parcel all the way adjacent to Corson, maybe it'd be a different outcome. But understand that we are really just considering option one, that does not allow any truck traffic or haul roads on 260th Street. Understand that's, you know, one of the biggest concerns of the neighbors. I guess I'd be in favor of approving this. And just for a point of clarity, too, you know, that the option one actually is a condition, is condition 25. So that is something that we can, you know, always hold our feet in the fire, too, so to speak. So I guess with that, I'd make my motion to approve.
I'll second with the comment that, yeah, that I'm always protective of our township roads. And so I was glad that staff got out front of that one and, and talked about that. But as to the site plan here and what's in front of us, I think I would be in favor of approving this. I just think we get interested folks in the community, and it's just assigned to our, our friends at Knife River to continue to be good neighbors and accommodate those when those are, we're getting a good public comment from the community, we should address that. But as some of those are pointing out, are other parcels that are not at direct issue tonight. But I'm glad to hear that there's some concurrent thought to cleaning that up. And we have other mechanisms at the planning office that if something does need to get cleaned up. But as for the proposal in front of us tonight, I'm in favor of it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Any other old business?
Old business, I will report that last Tuesday, the county commission approved the envisioned 2045 plan. So that has been approved and is now effective.
Any new business?
Yes. Under new business, as you are aware, we have a number of different, we have a joint ordinance with the city of Sioux Falls as joint zoning ordinance. We also have a county zoning ordinance. So I would ask that you, I could, I could ask Kevin to get up and give you the same presentation on ADUs and building eligibility transfers. But what I'd like to just ask you under new business is to make a similar motion to authorize staff to publish a hearing notice for amendments to our zoning ordinance for the March meeting would be the, we'd be proposing to make similar or identical ordinance amendments dealing with ADUs and that building eligibility change. So you'd be acting on the same item that we just heard on for the city. So, but I, I'd like to have that hearing at the same night. It would be just a separate hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
No, no other old business or new business?
I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.